Good evening, Chair. Calls to order zoning a Board of Appeals for zoning appeal case number 6,002, Matthew Watson. Welcome, Mr. Snee, Ms. Forster. We are here this evening for final argument in zoning case number 6,02, excuse me. Hearing examiner's decision was rendered on June 4th, 2024, which allowed a group home for sheltered care in the R2 zoning district with conditions. This final argument shall be based solely on the evidence in the record, which includes the application and documentation submitted to the hearing examiner, recorded testimony received at the hearing, and the decision of the hearing examiner. Each party has 15 minutes to present their argument. Each party may use all 15 minutes at the beginning presenting their arguments, or may preserve some time for rebuttal. The applicant will go first. You'll be able to have one rebuttal, no matter how much time you save. Mr. Snee is here this evening representing Mr. Watson, the applicant. The protestants are here as well, represented by Ms. Forster. You must identify one representative which you have. Mr. Steer, you will present first, whenever you're ready, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board of Appeals. Joseph Francis Snee Jr., South Main Street, Bel Air 21014, with Snee, Luge and Hemlinger, PA, on behalf of Matthew Watson. There he is, seated to my right, your left. And this is Board of Appeals, appeal case number 6,002. By way of background, the Watson property is before you. There's a red dot right above parcel 132 that indicates where it is. This is the SDAT record from the state, and it indicates that it's known as Philadelphia Road, and it's approximately 2.03 acres in size. The next slide again states it's 2.03, it's R2 zoning, and that again is shaded in that brown color, and our area is R2. We have existing structures on that, and it's a single-family home, a carport, a garage, and a shed. And those are the current uses. Next slide. This is the aerial showing the Watson property from outer space. It shows the improvements to 1601 Philadelphia Road and Joppa 21085. As President Vincenti indicated, this is the timeline. The application was filed back in January. We had the hearing before hearing examiner Cahill in April. The decision came down in June, and these good folks to my left filed the final argument in a timely manner, and hence we are here today for this case. As Mr. President correctly indicated, this is a review on the record by the Board of Appeals. It's therefore a quasi-judicial hearing, and the decision of the Board would be to accept, reject, or modify Mr. Cahill's decision. We would respectfully request at the end that you accept it and support it by findings of fact and conclusions of law. Therein is the definition for the group home. This is from the Development Code of Harford County, which was updated, and it says more than eight unrelated persons with special needs, and some, but doesn't have to be, we could provide personal care, social or counseling services, as well as transportation. And there's your permitted use chart. I'm sure the Board of Appeals is familiar with this. Group homes for sheltered care, if you look in that R2 zone, highlight it in yellow. If you drop down to the last category, the group homes are a special exception in the R2 zone, along with all those others that you see at the bottom. Principal permitted uses are reserved for those business categories to the right on the chart. It is codified at 267-9I that the Board of Appeals consider 10 different factors that are built into the code, and I've laid out all 10. I don't intend to read them all, but these have to be considered by the Board as you make your decision, and they're in front of the Board for that consideration, and there are 10 of them, which we addressed at the presentation before the hearing examiner, which I'll get to in a moment. There are, in addition to what we just discussed, 267-88, these are special considerations as well, and those specific standards go for those group homes. I would point out that the density here is limited to eight residents per acre. We have two acres plus or minus, so we'll have no more than 16 people at site in the R2 zone under the special exception. So in addition to the code requirements, there is an abundance of case law in the state of Maryland on special exceptions. And just by way of background, you have principally permitted uses, a matter of right. Just above that is a special exception. It's presumed to be zoned for that purpose unless there's an adverse impact at this site that would be different than a similarly zoned property, R2, in Harford County. And the presentation we made before the hearing examiner was, that is not the case. The adverse impact would be no different, if at all, from another R2 zone property in Harford County. And to that support, we called on four witnesses, Mr. Watson, and then three experts, one in healthcare, one a professional engineer, and one expert land planner. Courtney, Art, and Ed supported Mr. Watson as the property owner. I think it's incumbent upon me to point out that the People's Council did participate below, before the hearing examiner. There was no expert witnesses called by People's Council. Therefore, what we presented remains uncontradicted in the record, and it is noteworthy to point out that People's Council declined to participate or request final argument. I didn't want to go through all of the testimony of Mr. Watson, but just some highlights. He would operate as PRN Solutions LLC. This would provide aftercare for health issues, sober living, and security would be on premises 24 hours, staffing, security cameras, and motion detectors, as well as the maximum of 16 that Mr. Watson would have on site. All patients would be subject to random drug tests. Transportation is provided as necessary. The structure of the program is laid out there, and it's an employment-centric, so the patients are served by a full staff, one of whom will be there 24/7/365. Our expert in healthcare, Courtney, very, very good witness and a consultant to Mr. Watson for this project. This is what they call Level 3.1 ASAM. It's a low intensity for aftercare, and it's for people seeking longer care after they say they get out of a 28-day inpatient facility. The services provided are there in the bullet form, but it's a lot like some of the other folks I represent. It's hands-on, and it's a lot of counseling. You'll stay at least, pardon me, at most five months, and the payment is through Medicaid. No prescription medications on site. If a patient needs it, they will be stored safely. Mr. Leonard was called next. He summarized the property. Considerable road frontage along Philadelphia Road. It is serviced by public water and sewer, which is good for a commercial improvement. We would seek a 24-foot-wide commercial driveway through the state highway access permit process. We would build on-site four parking spaces on one side of the home and five on the other, so we meet the parking requirements, and we're contemplating a 20-by-30 addition to house our patients. And then the testimony of Mr. Steer, an expert in planning. He went through those 10 factors I discussed earlier that the Board of Appeals must consider, and the other ones that are peculiar to group homes for sheltered care. He was of the opinion that, from a land use perspective and from a planning perspective, that we met or exceeded all the requirements that the code considers and that we espouse testimony on, including, but not limited to, traffic noise, et cetera. And Mr. Steer's opinion, as a land planner, went uncontradicted. So he concluded that there would be no adverse impact under your master plan and your related studies for this use at the R2 zone property for group home for sheltered care. I indicated no sidewalks on Philadelphia Road, because that came up repeatedly at the hearing examiner level, and when we toured that vicinity, there just simply are no sidewalks. So even if we built one, it wouldn't connect to anything. So based on that, we're respectfully requesting the Board to affirm Mr. Cahill's decision, granting the special exception in the R2 zone to allow the group home for sheltered care on the Watson property known as 1601 Philadelphia Road, and that's Joppa 21085. And with that, I would reserve approximately four minutes for rebuttal if necessary, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Snee. Ms. Forster, you're representing a group of protestants, and you are the recognized speaker here this evening?
Yes.
And you'll have 15 minutes, ma'am.
My name is Donna Forster. I live at 1507 Philadelphia Road, three properties away from 1601 Philadelphia Road, Mr. Watson's property. I've been a resident of Harford County for 68 years and was a classroom teacher in Harford County for 41 of those years. I'm speaking on behalf of my neighbors and myself to ask you, the Board of Appeals, to overturn the ruling, allowing an exception to build a 16-bed facility for adult male addicts and alcoholics in our R2 residential neighborhood. Before I begin, I want you to know that information and concerns I'll be sharing with you are based on the full witness testimony from the April 10th, 2024 hearing, not just on the summary of events in the hearing examiner's ruling. And we're basing our appeal on several factors. First, according to Harford County's hearing and appeals process, it's clearly stated in Section A 274-3 that all hearing witnesses shall be subject to cross-examination by the opposing party. We residents did not get our opportunity to question a key witness for Mr. Watson, Ms. Wendelowsky. It's her treatment program Mr. Watson has hired for the facility. We residents were told by the hearing examiner that only he and the People's Council could ask questions during Mr. Watson's presentation, and we would have to wait until after the break. And prior to the meeting, the People's Council told us he did not represent us and would not ask our specific questions. So we waited to question Ms. Wendelowsky, but she left during the break, saying she had to drive home to Glen Burnie and take care of her two dogs. So again, we were unable to cross-examine a key witness about more details, the success of the program, how will clients be vetted for criminal backgrounds, will medical people be involved in treatment, and what safety measures will be put in place besides planting bushes and installing motion lights to ensure our safety? And it was evident Mr. Watson knew little of the specifics of the program, as he often deferred to Ms. Wendelowsky when he was questioned. Well, what facts we learned concerned us greatly. We learned that applicant, Mr. Watson, will not be operating the facility. He'll be an absentee landlord. He has turned that responsibility and accountability over to second and third parties. He has a newly-created company, which he admits has no experience in running such a facility, and over to Ms. Wendelowsky. This is a fee-for-service rehab facility where clients only stay five months until their Medicaid benefits run out, and then they are released, whether they recover or not, and another group will take their place. Besides not being able to cross-examine a key witness, as was our right, our second reason for our appeal is that there are two statements given as support for the exception that are incorrect, according to witness testimony. The hearing examiner said there will be no drugs on the location, but when questioned by the People's Council, Ms. Wendelowsky said they will not be prescribing drugs, but drugs will be given on premises as prescribed by clients' doctors. She admitted methadone, suboxone, and other psychotropic drugs that are used to treat opioid-addicted clients will be there and kept in lock boxes with a trusted employee having the key. We also learned that most of the time, there will be one or two staff members on hand, possibly three or four at times, to oversee 16 recovering addicts. There will be drugs in the facility. The second incorrect statement in the ruling says there's not a church or school in the area. Trinity Lutheran Church and School are part of this neighborhood and only seven tenths miles away from the facility. There's also a bar within walking distance. Our final reason to overturn the ruling, we strongly feel the requirements for an exception have not been met. The first requirement, per Harford County's code, says the proposed use must be in harmony with adjacent property uses. Well, the purpose of our homes in our neighborhood is to provide a permanent home to single families, and the purpose of Mr. Watson's facility is to provide a rehab program lasting five months until Medicaid benefits run out, and then another group of 16 would enter. This is basically a fee-for-service enterprise with no intent to provide a permanent home for anyone. There'll be a constant turnover of people, making its use similar to a motel where people pay to stay and then they move on. And you can be sure Mr. Watson will strive to keep those 16 beds filled to maximize the benefits of his enterprise, thus a constant turnover of people. And one of Mr. Watson's witnesses, Edward Steer, property developers, admitted Harford County views the property as a commercial property, and it will be given a tax business number, unlike taxes on the homes in our neighborhood. So if Harford County recognized this as a commercial enterprise, it's not compatible with the residential uses in our neighborhood, and it belongs in a commercially zoned area. The second requirement for granting an exception is that the proposal should not create additional adverse effects, other than those inherent use. While the inherent adverse effects, opening a rehab facility in any neighborhood are serious and shouldn't be taken lightly. We have serious concerns. We have single-family homes with young children. We have elderly, and we have Clayton House, a permanent home for severely challenged adults, right next door to 1601. We were also told there would be outside activities as part of the treatment. Our neighborhood has already had bad experiences with a group home, as one of our neighbors had a man in his underwear standing over young children while they were playing in their yard, due to the lack of supervision and oversight. And what kind of oversight will be put in place to see that these things don't recur? Imagine 16 adult addicts who have serious behavioral and emotional issues, who failed in other programs, being housed in a drug facility next door to you, across the street, or a few houses away. Well, in addition to these inherent risks of a rehab facility, we feel the organization, the accountability, and especially oversight, as proposed by Mr. Watson, creates additional risks and adverse effects on our community's safety. Especially concerning to us is the fact that Mr. Watson, the applicant, will not be running the facility, that an unknown company with no experience will operate it, and Ms. Wendelowsky testified, once she gets the facility accredited and licensed, her direct support will be withdrawn. She'll be a consultant, so who's going to see that the rules, the regulations, the conditions applied by the hearing examiner are truly being met on a daily basis? By the way, her company is in Mariettaville. Additional risks particular to Mr. Watson's facility is the minimal staffing of one to two people, most times to oversee the 16 adult addicts. There will be a part-time peer coach, part-time director, full-time counselor with no evening or weekend hours, and the constant turnover of people. These additional concerns of supervision, staffing, oversight, and accountability as relate to Mr. Watson's proposed facility speak directly to the concerns we have. Even Mo Davenport raised concern about whether the facility would adequately accommodate 16 adults. No architectural drawings were submitted, and he and the Department of Planning and Zoning did not recommend approval of this exception. In conclusion, you are elected officials, and you represent many citizens and neighborhoods across the county, but you're also homeowners. So we're asking you to stand up for the homeowners and the residents of our neighborhood by overturning the ruling that allows this rehab facility at 1601 Philadelphia Road. Again, we base our appeal on we did not get a chance to cross-examine a key witness. We strongly believe that the two requirements for an exception have not been met. It's not compatible with adjacent uses, homes versus rehab, additional risks, there would be psychotropic drugs there, minimal staffing to oversee a large number of recovering adults, addicts, questionable and uncertain oversight and accountability for the daily operation. Now, we know that the Health Department, State Health Department, and Harford County Health Department will be involved in the accreditation, but their ongoing inspections probably will happen like once a year, and they're sporadic at best. We're concerned about who's going to actually monitor and oversee the people on a daily basis. There is a church and school within walking distance of this facility, and it was not recommended by Mo Davenport and the Planning and Zoning due to the number of clients and the lack of architectural plans. In conclusion, if you choose to let the ruling stand, in the interest of safety, we strongly urge you to limit the number of people allowed and require a Citizens Advisory Board be created to address any community concerns as they arise. This should be comprised of neighbors, someone from the facility, and someone from the Health Department or the Harford County Government. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forster. You have 5 minutes and 37 seconds left for rebuttal if needed. Mr. Snee, 4 minutes, 15 seconds.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the Board of Appeals. With respect to the cross-examination issue, I would point out that People's Council was there, as they're hired to do at taxpayer expense by this county, and did cross-examine our witnesses. So from a due process standpoint, the obligations were certainly fulfilled. With respect to the recommendation from the Department of Planning and Zoning, it was neutral. It just said, should the hearing examiner decide to grant this, then you have to consider four or five different things. And we certainly did that. As for drugs, they're not going to be prescribed from there, but they'll be brought onto the premises, just as you would go to clients and pick up your prescription and take it at your house for whatever your medical needs may be. The adverse impact, I would say this, that there was absolutely no expert testimony presented by People's Council or our neighbors with respect to the issue of adverse impact. And that requires a expert opinion based on a reasonable degree of planning and zoning experience, coupled with sound engineering, and that's exactly what happened in this There was no adverse impact. That was the opinion of our experts, and it was unrebutted, and it remains unrebutted today. With respect to outside activities, they're regulated by Mr. Cahill's decision, and he specified the hours they can begin and the hours they must end. And as I recall, it was like at 7:30 or 8:30 at night. So that has been covered. So with the fact that we made a presentation by Mr. Watson, who set up a company, who went to great lengths to hire experts for this type of facility, speaks volumes about his commitment to making sure that people are sober and remain sober, and it's something that's needed in Harford County, and he will provide that service. As for what it looks like in the future, we're simply here for the special exception. We would have to go back and seek governmental approvals for any improvements, for state highway access, for anything necessary to develop the site for this intended purpose, and we will do so. So with that, Mr. President, members of the Board of Appeals, we would respectfully request again that the hearing examiner's decision be adopted and affirmed by this Board. Thank you very much.
Ms. Forster, you have 5 minutes, 37 seconds.
Yes. We residents had specific questions that we wanted asked of Ms. Wendelowsky, following her testimony. We didn't have the opportunity to do that. The People's Council, as I told you, we met him 20 minutes before the hearing, first time we talked to him, and he informed us that he would not be asking questions on our behalf. So we had the right, by the hearing process of Harford County, to question Ms. Wendelowsky. After her testimony, we had specific questions, and we were told by Mr. Cahill that we could ask these questions following the break, and she left. So we were unable to do that. As far as expert witnesses, we would have had some there had we known what Mr. Watson was planning. When this first became public in our neighborhood, we called Planning and Zoning, and we said, how's this work? What can we do? What is this? All we knew was a sheltered care for adults. What is that? Well, Mr. Watson doesn't have to tell you that. So we did the best we could, with what information we could glean, came to the meeting. No, we didn't have expert witnesses, because we had no idea until that evening exactly what he was planning to do. So we didn't approach the meeting on an equal footing, and that concerns us greatly. When you say we didn't have witnesses, we would have had people. And when the only people that were notified about this facility are the neighbors directly next door, you know, word of mouth got to us. We did the best we could to go online, and we saw who Mr. Watson was. He's a geologist by trade. No, we had no idea what he was planning until that evening, and we were told by Planning and Zoning, Dottie Smith, I believe her name is, that he didn't have to share that with us. So how was that a fair meeting? How could we be even more prepared than we were, express our concerns as best we could? So, you know, it just concerns us when he says nothing was contested. Well, like I said, the People's Council told us he was going to do, he had his own questions. He asked those questions. Through those questions, we got some information, but we had follow-up questions, and we were denied that right to ask those questions. When she left during the break, because she had a long ride home and she had to take care of her two dogs. That, to me, speaks volumes about the commitment and the concern for the safety of people who live in the neighborhood. It just bothers me very much, and I think all of us, that, you know, nothing was contested. We did not know the People's Council until two days before. I contacted Dottie Smith. What happened to the People's Council? Wasn't he supposed to contact us? Two days before, there was a change, and Mr. Chavalowski, I think his name was, got in touch with us by email. I'll see you at the meeting, before the meeting. And that's when he told us, oh, no, no, it doesn't work that way. I'm not asking your questions. I have questions to ask myself. So again, after this testimony, we were waiting our turn, and we never got a chance to ask follow-up questions, and Mr. Chavalowski did not ask questions for us. And we feel that the fact that Mo Davenport and Planning and Zoning, it says right in the ruling by Mr. Cahill, they did not recommend that this exception be approved. The fact- The fact that there will be drugs, they keep saying there won't be drugs, there will be. No, they're not prescribing the drugs. But at the same time, they will be seeing that drugs are administered on the premises as prescribed by patients' doctors. And I get that, but the fact is there will be serious drugs, methadone, suboxone, and other psychotropic drugs on the premises. As they testified, there will be a key, a trustee who will have the key. Now, this is one or two people who are going to be on hand to deal with 16 male adults who are in different stages of recovery. And when asked, actually, when asked by the People's Counsel, you know, are they near recovery, the word Ms. Wandelowski used was, they're stable, and she had to search for that word. So these people are bearing degrees of where they are in their recovery, but there will be drugs on the property. And again, our big concern is the daily oversight. When you have a company that didn't bother to testify, we have no idea who they are, and they're going to be in charge of running this, that raises serious concerns. Those are the additional risks that we think negates the, the special exception. That's the second requirement. There shouldn't be any additional risks other than what's in the rehab facility. And this, the way it's going to go down, the way it's set up, to me, you know, all of us, it provides additional risks. And we've, we asked you to overturn it. There were conditions placed upon it by Mr. Cahoe. He was trying to look out for us. But again, who's going to see that these conditions are met? Not Mr. Watson. He's not going to be there. Ms. Wandelowski's only going to be there for a, a time, and she'll be gone, and we have this unknown company running this very serious facility. So, now my time's up.
Thank you, Ms. Forster. Good job watching the clock.
It's my fourth grade teacher.
Counsel, at this time, you have any questions? Mr. Guthrie?
Yes, I do. Talking about the employees that are going to be there, there's supposed to be four full-time employees, is that what we're talking about?
They, they testified to be one or two most of the time. At times, there may be three or four, if there's like an overlap of the shifts, but one or two most of the time.
Yeah, it says one, it says one person will be on site 24/7. So we're talking about the possibility of only being one person to handle 16.
Well, I, I think that's incorrect, with all due respect, Councilman Guthrie. So the employees are summarized at the bottom of page 17?
Well, that's what I'm looking at, right on the bottom.
And then the one person is basically during sleep hours, so there's nothing going on anyway. It's that people are, people, people, people are sleeping.
Mr. Snead, excuse me just a minute.
Yes, sure.
Folks, no outbursts, please. Go ahead, Mr. Snead.
So in addition to that one person who will always be there, there'll be an abundance of professionals on site for purposes of this group home.
But not all at once?
An abundance of people on.
A director, counselor, support specialist, behavioral health technician, program coordinator, four additional employees, and on-site 24/7. So that's what we start with.
Joe, it says one person will be on site 24/7, one.
At least.
Well, we hope it won't be zero.
But, but you, the, the one person can't do what these other folks can do, Councilman Guthrie.
I understand that.
Okay, so it's the whole team effort. We can't isolate just one person. It's everybody in those bullets at the bottom of the slide that will be in the facility providing the necessary services for the folks that go there.
Okay, also, did you do some calculations on, the property's a little over two acres, and it's, it's zone R2, which is usually a small amount of townhomes that can be put per acre, if you were building townhomes? I'm just trying to get it clear to me what, how many townhomes that, that you build on two acres and compared to this. Now, I know R4, I mean, R3 and R4, each number means you can put more houses, more townhouses per acre. So was there any calculation? Maybe, maybe it's confusing what, why that, why that has any bearing, but I'm just trying to figure if they were decided to build townhomes, how many townhomes would be there compared to this construction?
Yes, we didn't do that calculation. We were focused on the group home. So I, I, the engineers would have to do a sketch plan to figure that out, but no, we did not do that.
The only thing, can you tell me, did I hear the testimony correctly, that they, there were no drawings or anything of, of facilities, possible facilities that had been produced?
According to Ms. Timo Davenport, when he testified, they had no architectural drawings at that time, and that was April 10th, 2024, when the hearing was held.
Well, there's a simple explanation for that, Councilman Guthrie, and that is, you do not want to spend a small fortune on design, architecture, and engineering until you know you have the requisite zoning approvals in place, which is the group home for sheltered care. And until we are sure that we have that, there's no sense investing in any of those other items.
Okay, that's all I have in that front.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Mr. Janjordano? Mr. Riley?
Ms. Forster, how many folks do you represent in the neighborhood? I mean, did you go door-to-door and?
We did. We went a half a mile down to Winter's Run, and I'm not sure how many houses are there, maybe 12, 14 homes. And then we went up to Clayton Road, which is probably another five or six, probably about 25 homes of families.
Maybe you have to stick to the facts that are in the testimony, please.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Very small.
Mr. Bennett?
Hello, good evening. Could either of you speak to a bar that's near the premises and what the distance is and what the consideration is if, if that was spoken to at all as far as in plans and operations?
I think Ms. Forster spoke to that.
Yeah, it's about a half a mile down. It's Winter's Run, Winter's Run Inn, probably about a half a mile. I mean, it's within walking distance. It's not a nice walk, and walking along Route 7 is bad news, but it's doable. And the same way, the other way is the Trinity Lutheran Church and School. You could walk to that as well. And their school bus stops along the way for the public schools.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Janjordano?
Good evening, ma'am. So one of the things I read also was, there was something about lights, and they're going to put auxiliary lights, but then the lights were going to go out, but then also there was a timer. So the lights are going to stay on, but then at a certain hour, the timer's going to shut off the lights. There was a, there was something in, in the packet that talked about the lights and, and lighting up the parking lot. And then after a certain period of time, those lights were, were going to go out, but if anybody left or came in, would the lights come back on again?
That level of detail, we have not addressed, but that can be addressed.
That was in the, that was in the report. That was a question.
Right.
Okay.
But we have not finalized what that might look like, Councilman.
Okay. And then the other question was the Trinity Lutheran Church. How many, what grades do they teach classrooms over there?
K to eight.
K to eight. Do you know how many students are there by any chance?
I don't know. I, I do go to that church, but it's, yeah, K to eight.
And do they go on a bus, or are they, do they have bus services?
A lot of the parents, it's, I guess, a private school, you know, church school. So a lot of the parents, I know a lot of the traffic on Route 7 in the morning, parents are often bringing the children there.
Okay. Because one of the testimonies said no impact on schools, churches, house of worship. So that sounds like it's a school, a church, and a house of worship. So, okay, thank you very much.
And I might note too, Councilman, that the folks from Trinity did not attend, to my knowledge.
We didn't go up that far.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. Anyone else one last time, please? Thank you for being here this evening. This will conclude this hearing, and we will take this up at a future meeting. Thank you.
Will we need to come back? Is that what you're saying?
We will notify you when it's on the agenda, yes.
We need to come back?
You don't have to, if you just want to be here for sure.
It won't be in testimony. Oh, okay.
And if I may, we're going to take a short recess. If you'll peel the mics, please. Thank you. Chair calls order legislative session day 24-024. I would ask you to please join us in standing for the pledge, followed by the opening prayer by Councilman Janjordano.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, as we gather here for this legislative session, we seek your wisdom and guidance in the decisions we are called to make. In this moment, I carry the memory of my father, Big Al, who recently passed, and I ask that you grant me the strength and clarity he embodied throughout his life. May his legacy of integrity and love towards others inspire not only me, but all who serve in this chamber today. Guide our hearts and minds, Lord, that we may lead with compassion and work together for greater good of our community. Amen.
Counsel, if I may, before we start, I want to recognize and welcome County Executive Johnny Osheski from Baltimore County, and also County Executive Casely in the chambers this evening. May I have consent to move from Agenda Item 5A to 4A thereafter? Great, thank you. Agenda number five, consideration petitions, applications, appointments, and nominations. Council appointment, Harford Living Treasure may have a motion.
Council President, I move to approve the Harford Living Treasure of Richard Street.
Second. Thank you. Mr. Guthrie? Moving in second to approve Dr. Street for Harford Living Treasure. Is there any discussion? I think I'll hold mine till the floor. Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Balsod?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye. There being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, the appointment is hereby approved. Back to Agenda number four, presentation of proclamations, Harford Living Treasure. Mr. Street, would you join me down front? And anyone else that would like to come with you?
Where's Mary?
Whenever you're ready.
I'm ready.
You will. Come on up.
Whereas Richard P. Street Jr., VMD, was born on July 10th, 1945, and was raised on Spenciola Farms in Harford County by his parents, Richard P. Street Sr. and Mary Spencer Street. Dr. Street is married to his wife, Esther R. Street, and have, and the two have three children, Kimberly, Zakari, Dr. Richard Street III, and Christopher C. Street, and seven grandchildren. And whereas Dr. Street graduated from the University of Pennsylvania School of Veterinary Medicine with a veterinary medical doctor degree in 1969, and previously attended St. Margaret School, Beller Jr. Senior High School, and the University of Maryland, College Park. Dr. Street practiced veterinary medicine in the United States Army in Harford County for a total of 50 years. And whereas in addition to his veterinary practices, Dr. Street Jr. served as a member of the Beller Volunteer Fire Company in the 1960s, and member of the Harford County Economic Development Advisory Board from 1996 to 2007, the Maryland Environmental Service Board of Directors from 2009 to 2020, Stepping Stone Farm Museum, and the Harford County Farm Bureau, just to name a few. Dr. Street Jr. currently serves as a University of Maryland, Upper Chesapeake Health Foundation since 1999, and the Board of Director since 2004 in various leadership capacities. And whereas Richard P. Street Jr. was recognized with a Lifetime Achievement Award by the Maryland Veterinary Medical Association in 2013, Harford Philanthropist of the Year for the Street family by the Maryland Associated Fundraising Professions 2012, and most recently as Harford County Good Scout in 2023. Now, therefore, we, the County Council of Harford County, Maryland, on this 17th day of September 2024, do hereby proclaim Richard P. Street Jr., VMD, a Harford Living Treasure. And be it further known that his, his lifetime experience and contributions to the Harford County community will provide a permanent record which will recall the past, inform the present, and guide the future of Harford County, that his memories and history will be recorded by the Harford County Public Library Oral Historian and will become part of the oral history collection of the library.
So it's an honor and a pleasure to be able to present this proclamation to you on behalf of my colleagues. You and I go back a few years, and to quote former County Executive Jim Harkins, I don't think there's anyone any more deserving of this award than you. So he actually sent over a few words, so I thought I would read them real quick. He said, "We could not recognize a more worthy candidate for this honor than Dr. Richard Street. You are a man of great honesty and integrity." I questioned that part, but. "For years, Dick has volunteered to serve on boards and commissions that improve the quality of life for all of our citizens. You have been a leader in the Upper Chesapeake Medical Center's transition, new buildings and improvements. Jim recognizes that you are truly committed to Harford County." So I just wanted to share that. He's not able to be with us, and you know why. I also, County Executive Casely had a few words he wanted to say.
Thanks, Pat. Doc, it's absolutely, and I, I agree with everything Jim Harkins said, my predecessor, but it's, it's a real honor to be able to be here with you and, and your beautiful family, to recognize you for all the, all the hard work, the amazing things that you've done for, for the county that you and I both love very much, and, and all the wonderful citizens. So congratulations on, on this honor, and look forward to, to many more years of you continuing to express your love and interest in our, in our wonderful county we all love. Thank you, sir, very much.
Thank you very much. Also, we have representation here from Upper Chesapeake this evening. I see Mr. Ferrera. You want to say a few words? I see a lot of friends in the audience, DeCampbell's, Stover, Snead, Brian Kelly, Shore, Lyle Sheldon.
Well, I'm glad the county knows what Upper Chesapeake does, is that Dick truly is a living treasure for our community and has served tirelessly and with great distinction, moving healthcare forward in our community. So, Dick, thank you and congratulations.
Counsel, anyone want to have a comment?
Congratulations on this well-deserved, well-deserved. Yeah, yeah, well-deserved, and congratulations. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one. Yes, absolutely.
Tough act to follow. Like to thank everybody that chose me for this, and the County Council, and the Executive Office, and anybody else that was involved with, I think it was the library, probably, but.
I had to pay them.
Wouldn't be the first time.
Check bounced.
I really thank my family for being here tonight, my wife, my three children, and six of the seven grandchildren, and one of the daughter-in-laws is under the weather tonight, and the other grandchild is in University of, or the College of Charleston in South Carolina, in college. But she would, they both would have been here if they could have. As a lot of people know, my, both my parents, the Street and my parent, mother and father's family, the Streets and the Spencers, go back in Harford the Streets and the Spencers, go back in Harford County over three hundred years. And I have been here my seventy-nine years, except when I went to college and was two years in the Army. So I'm a lifelong resident of Harford County, and down through the generations of the family, they were, they passed it on and taught the next generation to, for a community that gives, has been good to you, give back to that community with your time, talent, and treasures.
You have done that.
Thank you.
And I want to thank Esther for sending over the names and Dudley and Laura for their input as well. So it takes all of us, right, to get things straight and get it done and recognize those that are very deserving, and you are.
I was here for another cause this evening.
Let's get another picture.
Mr. Bennett, can you step this way just a tad, please? Perfect. All right.
Okay, Lyle.
Quite welcome. Congratulations. Good seeing you. Women's, Harford County Public Library Board of Trustees, Mr. Janjordano?
Counsel President, I move to appoint Harford County Public Library Board of Trustees, new appointment Earl Edding, and the reappointment of Carol Wright.
Thank you. May I have a second? Sure. Thank you, Mr. Riley. Any discussion? It's been moved in second to approve the new appointment and reappointment to the Library Board of Trustees. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being five in the affirmative and two absent, the executive appointments are hereby approved. Agenda number six, special presentations, Maryland Association of Counties. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome County Executive Ilsheski and Mr. Sanderson from Mako, please. Well, thank you for your patience right out of the gate.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Really a pleasure to be with you tonight alongside Executive Director Sanderson. In addition to being Baltimore County Executive, I have the privilege and honor this year of serving as the President of the Maryland Association of Counties, and this represents visit number fifteen of our twenty-four as we try to get to every single county in the city of Baltimore across our great state. I want to just take a moment to thank the council and County Executive Casley for their support and involvement in Mako. County Executive is on our executive board, and I want to just note, in abstentia, Councilman Penment has also been very active on our legislative committee, which we appreciate the feedback. Really, we are a member organization, and the work that we do is reflective of our shared work at the local level. What's been really informative as we've had these tours across the state is that the conversations have been pretty consistent. Large and small counties, urban, rural, Democrats, Republicans, it really, the issues are very similar in terms of what we're facing from the implementation of blueprint and things like school construction, highway user dollars, and transportation funding, community college, finding solutions to our housing needs as well as things like solar siting. So if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, we'll have Mr. Sanderson sort of do both a retrospective and a prospective, answer any questions you all may have, and of course, we'd love to hear what's happening in Harford County with our local governments. Thank you all for your leadership, and thanks again for the opportunity to be with you tonight.
Good evening. Thanks very much for the time. I'm Michael Sanderson with the Maryland Association of Counties. Glad to join you once again. We brought a packet of information. I don't plan to go through that in a whole lot of detail, but let me hit just a few things that have been relevant this last legislative session. The front page of the packet kind of goes through our broad involvement on policy. We do a lot of work in Annapolis advocating on behalf of all the services that counties deliver to every Marylander. I'll hit a couple of issues quickly and then try and go a little deeper into budget and fiscal issues because that's really the talk of the town right now, and that tends to set the tone for everything we focus on. The last year, we spent a great deal of time on a number of different issues on behalf of local governments. It's a big year for public housing policy, and that can be an awkward conversation when we talk about planning and zoning and land use. We think of that as our community input is central. We didn't actually have to sacrifice those principles to come to a good outcome, to provide some more incentives for achievable and affordable housing in specific areas. Some programs that are getting state funding through local, through low-income housing programs, projects that are around rail stations, reconverted state-owned property and so forth, sort of rifle shots rather than the big, broad, the state comes in and tells us how to zone. That was a good collaborative effort that could have been a negative and combative one. We're pleased with that. I don't think the conversation is over. We know that we are short on housing in every part of the state that looks different in some places than others, but as a practical matter, we're facing a lot of different things, higher interest rates and a lot of new market competitors in the housing place. So to the extent that we can be productive players on that, we're pleased with that, and I think that'll continue. We have a continuing issue with the state's goals for clean energy, and that means development of solar in particular in big parts of the state. We have ambitions to have a clean portfolio for energy sellers in the state that requires a lot of solar, and you can't, you can't transmit solar a long, long way. You can't get it from Montana and bring it here. You need to have it local so you don't lose too much in transmission, and that ends up being a challenge on the land use front as well. We have an awful lot of pressure for agricultural areas to be developed into clean energy sites for solar and silicon and so forth. That is a challenge on the land use side, particularly if you're trying to focus on agland preservation or historic areas or your most productive farmland. So we're continuing to engage with stakeholders on that issue. It is a difficult one. There's an awful lot of folks, deep in their heart, want to get clean energy as a centerpiece of what Maryland is trying to do. The way to get from here to there in a collaborative way is tough to work through. So we're active on this issue, and it's not, this is not done by any stretch, so. I'll mention one other thing. I think I was here before you at this table last year bemoaning that the state had given us so little guidance on where would you cite the new commercial adult-use cannabis locations? We're going to have a whole wave of additional licensees to sell cannabis, and the state had given us literally only two words in their implementation bill. They said reasonable zoning, which was a phrase that no Maryland law has never seen before. No one who does planning and zoning law knows what that phrase meant. Fortunately, we got some more clarity from the legislature this year. We now have about a page of text that kind of lays out some of the things that you can do, and you'd be on solid ground to be able to do. So a lot of jurisdictions said, "We want to have buffers around churches and houses of worship." You've got the ability to say, "Let's keep it at least a hundred feet from areas that are purely residential." You can keep one license holder a certain buffer away from an existing license holder. So some of those things, you might have been on shaky ground previously. We got, I think, ultimately some better and clearer guidance on implementing that at the local level. So that's a handful of things on a pretty lengthy list of topics that we've engaged on, and all of those are, I think, still alive going forward. Let me spend a couple of minutes on budget and fiscal issues because it's the biggest picture out there, and it continues to connect to just about everything we're thinking about with Annapolis. Public sector's in a weird spot right now. Generally speaking, the state's revenues are a function of the economy of the moment. Counties are a little less so because the property tax is the number-one revenue source for county governments, and property taxes are a little bit slow to catch up with the economy. You do, you reassess properties every three years, and if they've appreciated in property, you phase in that number every three years. So it tends to kind of crawl rather than leap and jump. The income tax and the sales tax are both really driven by who's earning wages right now, who's buying a pair of shoes right now, and it's today's economy that drives. Those are the two biggest movers by far in the state budget. So they feel movement in the economy rapidly. There's some softness in the economy that's peculiar. For most of the recent past, economists would say, "You could look at some of the easy top-line numbers. Look at the unemployment rate in Maryland." That'll be a pretty quick and easy guess as to how strong the economy is. Well, right now in Maryland, the unemployment rate is below three percent, which is ordinarily, by the textbooks, would be a basically unsustainable number. That would suggest our economy is rolling, gangbusters, white-hot. I'm not sure that's exactly what we see. We've got a quirky real estate market. We've got a quirky labor market. We've got a stripe of workers who haven't come back to the workplace after two thousand twenty and the economic shock that came along with the pandemic, and that has left us scratching our head. We have seen some sluggish revenue numbers when some of the base indicators would suggest things would be really strong. We also, of course, saw the federal government step in with some temporary funding to help everybody get through the pandemic time, and as those dollars have dried up, that also has left some needs in its wake, so that we were able to paper over some shortfalls with some maybe artificial stimulus through those times. It's left us in a tough spot. The state looks at their budget. They've got about a twenty-five billion-dollar general fund budget, and at the moment, they're projecting a shortfall of six or eight hundred million dollars, thereabouts. That's a big number, like, that's a huge sounding number to each of our jurisdictions. For the state, that is a decent-sized but semi-manageable figure. We've seen shortfalls of that magnitude get resolved without major chaos, without employees being laid off or whole services being compromised and that sort of thing. But a couple of years of that kind of shortfall, and then the state falls off a bit of a cliff. They're in a situation different from the counties with the big ambitious education plan that we share, funding responsibility for the blueprint for Maryland's future. The blueprint is a ten-year rollout to try and accomplish and achieve an awful lot more for the kids in our public schools, and the state has been paying for their share of the blueprint through a trust fund that's basically has been prepaid with casino revenues. State constitutional amendment said casino money needs to go into a lockbox for big educational improvements. Basically, they got money in the sock to pay for it for this year, FY twenty-five, for next year, FY twenty-six, and pretty much through FY twenty-seven. But when you look at their forecast, you get to FY twenty-eight, and their problem yawns to like a three-billion-dollar shortfall. So they've got a cash problem not too far down the road. And politically speaking, if you're into the third year of a four-year term, you're getting into a tough time to do any of the things that would resolve that kind of a budget shortfall. Do you rein back in and contain a whole bunch of other things in the state budget and spending plan? Do you go into the blueprint and say, "We stretch it out," or "We postpone pieces," or "We take elements and we say we'll do those later," or "We'll do less"? Or do you come up with revenues, either new revenues or increased rates, that would bring you the resources to live up to the pledges that you've already made? All of those will disappoint some constituency, and those are all difficult things to do. So as we get toward the end of a four-year term, it's difficult forecasting as to what they may have in mind. County budgets are already feeling a crunch to varying levels in various jurisdictions, but we're seeing this debate about funding the blueprint show up in multiple ways. It's a challenge for every jurisdiction to hit the number, and it kind of depends place by place how the blueprint number, sort of the local share of those costs, eventually catches up to and then passes what the county's commitment has already been. You've had, maintenance of effort has been the rule for an awfully long time. Soon it's going to be your share of the blueprint is going to exceed maintenance of effort, and you're going to have a year not too far out where education funding needs to go up by six, seven, eight, nine percent, and your revenues are going to go up by two, three, four. And if that's half of your budget, the math is really, really challenging. Some counties are already there. Some counties are looking at that a year or two down the road. But that's a true challenge for the county side of this ledger as well. What the state might do on their fiscal front matters an awful lot because if their plan is sort of, "Let's couch cushion our way through a year or two, and then when things get really tough, we'll make the tough actions that are required." Some of those are the toughest years for local governments because the way you find a hundred million here and a hundred million there is sometimes, "We'll extend this program out" and that sort of thing. But we have seen in the past, the counties suddenly shifted costs for teacher pensions or operating the state assessment offices, or some years before, highway user revenues, the share of state gas taxes that go to local governments to maintain our roads. We don't have a local gas tax. We depend on the state. That got carved up, mostly taken away in two thousand nine, and we're not even close to being back from those cuts. So those are the, those are the times when we're kind of at our most vulnerable. So I think fiscal stuff will be awfully important. The blueprint is attached to that. At the Mako conference, we heard the governor say everything needs to be on the table, suggesting that maybe a fine tuning and a twist and a turn here may be in the works. We haven't heard that exact note from legislative leaders the same way, and you probably need three different parties to be on a similar sheet of music for that sort of stuff to happen. But that's top of agenda come January, when everyone comes back to town in Annapolis, and we are big stakeholders in the state fiscal situation as well as the challenges you already face locally. So with that, I've left a whole lot of things out, but if there's other things that you'd like to get into further or that I missed, we'd be delighted to hear from you.
Counsel, Mr. Guthrie?
Well, first I thank you, and thank you, Johnny, for coming and saying hello to your dad for me. Back in early two thousand, him and I ran as a team to the Democratic Convention as a team. You know, and then after we got like fifty thousand votes, because you have to run an entire second district, you know, we ran as a team to win as a team, and lo and behold, after fifty thousand votes, we both got. I beat him by like seven or eight votes, and I go to the convention, he don't. And I was just embarrassed, but I called him up and I apologized all the, ask him about that. He'll tell you.
Oh, he's told me the story, Councilman.
Yeah. I couldn't believe it because we wanted to go together, so I wound up going to Denver, and I was a Hillary Clinton delegate, but we know the results. Anyway, I don't, you know, every year it gets tougher. The finances get tougher and tougher. This is my fourteenth year on the council, and I've attended every Mako conference, and they're really outstanding. Anybody think that or not, that they haven't been there and then see all the education stuff you can pick up. And what I really love about the Mako conferences is that you meet all the other council people and county executives all from other districts, and it really gets you exchanging information, which is great. I am very upset about cannabis stuff. I don't know why we got it called fancy. You know, it's marijuana. You know, I'm from the old school. But what I'm upset with the state about is the state is the dictator here, and they don't give the counties any option whatsoever to do anything, to direct anything on their own. We could vote against it. It won't matter, you know, the state rules. And I think that the state should be more lenient and let's, because every county's different, you know. Every county, the amount of people are different, the amount of, something like Harford County got three municipalities. Baltimore County don't have any. It's eight hundred thousand people. We have two hundred sixty-six. So it's all, it's different, you know, it's all different. And there should be some leeway to give to the county council and the county executives in the different jurisdictions, more leeway. I was, of course, there for the whole week and listened to the governor's speech on that Saturday, and I was, right up front, I was disappointed in, I listened to him, and he was talking. And I listened to him, and he was talking about all the shortfalls and the pitfalls and everything else, but he didn't really give us a lot of direction of where the state is going or how they're going to take care of all these events and what are the ideas? What is he going to ask all the counties to do to try to clear up some of these pitfalls? So that was disappointing to me. But overall, you guys keep up the good work because Mako is an outstanding organization, and I'll be there next year.
We know you will. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Mr. Riley?
Yes. I know everybody is aware of the fact that we had a shooting up here in Joppetown. And as you well know, our sheriff was very vocal about the fact that he couldn't talk to that 16-year-old. Do you see anything changing in that aspect as far as when somebody commits such a heinous crime that somehow we might give our law enforcement agency some privilege to be able to talk to these folks?
I would say, I would have said a while back that I would have forecasted Annapolis is done with this issue. They came together and made a number of procedural changes in a bill and kind of tried to find a medium on juvenile justice concerns, but they were getting a lot of pressure coming into the 2024 session. I think I might have guessed a while ago that they were done, and we'll see how this goes. Sometimes, one really clear example brings folks back to the table. And if it comes out that in the procedure of this particular case, that's going to get a lot of attention and correctly so, if there really was a missing piece here or there, and the law was written not thinking about that situation, I think Annapolis is usually pretty quick to say, all right, we missed the mark right there. Let's open this back up, and let's get it figured out. So I don't want to speak about the details, and we haven't heard Annapolis leaders get really specific on this front, but I've seen that pattern happen before. We had a terrible circumstance at a school in southern Maryland a number of years ago, and that happened during the legislative session. And the turnaround of the politics and discourse in Annapolis that session was remarkable. This might provide the same sort of illuminated opportunity for them. So there may be an opportunity there where I might not have said something for them.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Mr. Bennett?
Hello. Good evening. I think you both know me, but in case you don't, a little bit of background, my day job, so I'm a kindergarten teacher. I also formerly served on the advisory board for Pillar One for the AIB, which is the Early Childhood Expansion, and I'm a Board of Ed liaison. So I pay very close attention to both our county Board of Ed, but also the state Board of Ed. And I just want to make sure it's on Mako's radar that seven days from now, the state Board of Ed's going to be voting on their literacy policy. And with that, I mean, I've been advocating and lobbying for a state literacy policy for four years, but it will come with costs for local boards of education, which in turn means costs for local governments, county governments, to fund the literacy policy to make it work. You know, we're talking about changing county curriculum. We're talking about training all staff, retention at third grade if you're not on grade level. You know, these are costly measures, providing interventions and plans for all children who are screened below grade level, K through three. And so hopefully, ahead of the curve ball, advocating this year in Annapolis to make sure that's funded at a state level. You know, already, counties are struggling to fund their share of the blueprint, and if there's $3 million, $5 million, $10 million that have to go to additional literacy efforts, that's just a lot to overcome. So hopefully, Mako can be advocates on making sure that's funded from the state, not the counties, to make sure that happens. So I just want to put that on your radar in case it wasn't already there. On solar, I'm a big advocate for renewable energy. It's something that needs to get done. But I also know, talking to a lot of our eastern, southern, western counterparts, the concern is the consumption of green land. You know, Maryland's a tight county, or a tight state, and we're running out of green land, and we don't want to see that green land used up for just solar. And with the amount of energy that needs to be produced, I know a lot of our rural county counterparts want to see a push for gray space and brown space to be used. Is there any sort of state push or initiative to get that done so that we're putting solar, you know, on top of commercial spaces, parking lots, decommissioned waste facilities and the sort, so that we're keeping them off of prime farm space, you know, potential housing space and the like?
Both of your points, Councilmember, are right out of the Mako playbook. So I'm completely with you on ensuring that the state comes up with the resources for literacy initiatives. These are hand and glove with major elements of the blueprint, but to the extent that they're not clearly spelled out in the blueprint funding grid, they need to be in there, and they need to be on the state's side. The state needs to show up, not just add one thing to the list for our local school boards to do, and that's bread and butter stuff for our organization and for our sister organization that represents the school boards. On solar, I don't think there's anyone in the state who disagrees with the principle that we'd like to see us max out the built environment where you already have places, like the gray spaces, right? Perfectly well said. The market is really tough to try and make those as attractive as buying relatively cheap ag land. The numbers are really, really difficult. So the state has passed two bills over the last three years to try and move in that direction, and last year tried to provide some tax incentives on that front, the kind of stuff that the public sector can do to try and move the market. But the way you pencil out a project that's on a built-up area in a municipality in Prince George's County versus a similar-sized project on open green space in Caroline County in the Middle Eastern Shore, the numbers aren't even close. You can add up tax benefits and giveaways and incentives and carrots and so forth, and it's still an easy walk over to the shore to find the easiest spot. So we were playing a tough hand on that front. I still think it's the right thing to do to try and provide the incentives for places that you have, exactly, like a landfill, open or closed, take that open space and so forth. But there's limits to how much you can overcome just the physical difficulty of hoisting stuff 28 feet in the air is a lot more, a lot different from just dropping on the ground.
Just two quick observations, if I may. In addition, one is to that point, we actively are looking at two landfill projects in Baltimore County, but the transmission costs are killing us. The interconnectivity, what BGE is proposing to charge to actually get that production onto the grid is making it very difficult to make the project pencil out. And this is sort of prime where it should be so that we're not going after those farms and ag lands that we're also like, you know, you all in Hartford County trying to preserve. But so just emphasizing, yes, it is. We need all the support we can get. And then ditto, you know, support your comments on the additional funding from the state. I mean, we're already, you know, seeing that we are, and local governments, funding at record levels across the state to meet our obligations under the blueprint. And even when we're doing that, we are already being sort of tasked with these difficult choices of, because everything doesn't fall under the requirements of the blueprint, we have boards of ed that are coming back to us to say, well, you know, band and athletics and all these other things aren't actually included, the gifted and talented programs. So if you want to keep those in addition to funding, it's going to be even more money on top. So I think all the more reason why, if there are other changes, we need to really push our state counterparts to fund that as well.
To give another example, just to add, you know, for when you have those conversations, school safety liaisons, a big Hartford County Public Schools Initiative, not part of the blueprint. So there's no guaranteed funding for, when there's an incident like that happening in Joppetown, for someone to be there, to respond and support who's an HCPS staff member.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Jan Giordano?
Good evening, gentlemen. Thanks for coming. It's a lot of work to go out and see all the different counties, so taking your time out for your schedule. One of my big concerns is we're losing our transmission power station. So a lot of our electricity is going to be coming from Pennsylvania. So we haven't replaced any power stations. I don't know where that's going to go down the road, but I can tell you this, my day job, I own an insurance agency, we've got probably 3,500 clients. Each one of those clients has a couple of policies. I talk to probably 15 to 20 people on a daily basis. Three or four years ago, they were buying electric cars. Today, they're getting rid of their electric cars. They're going back to either gas or hybrids. Okay? Most of them have said, you know, as opposed to Jacob down here who's got electric cars, they can't sustain them, the cost of them, the insurance cost of them. And as everybody knows, the insurance has gone up. That's where the pain everybody's starting to feel. I said three years ago, it was going to take three years for it to come through. Everybody's seeing 40% increases on the car insurance. Homeowners is going up. You know, they're starting to look like Florida, the cost to rebuild homes has gone through the roof, and now we've had to implement some changes that the federal government made us do to rebuild a home. So you've seen inflation go up. It's kind of steadied off, but the cost of everything has gone up so high. I can tell you this, 20% sales decrease on the restaurant size in Ocean City. Same here, it's about 10%. Baltimore County, it's about 10%. I've got a lot of restaurants insured. There's a lot of pain out there. People aren't going out, spending the money. So it's starting to contradict a lot of things. I don't know how to solve that. I don't think you're going to solve it, you know, any which way. I know things are going to get more expensive, but my concern is, number one, electricity costs moving forward. Where are we going to get it from? You start pushing this. I know solar, it's going to give us a little bit, it's certainly not going to make up for what we have, and I don't think the push to electric cars is the answer. Probably, I think Toyota's got the best ideas that they do a lot of stuff in hybrid. So, you know, you get the benefits of both, you know, a hybrid vehicle and a gas vehicle. So, and I saw there's some other things here, this House Bill 538. So are these things that were approved, or are these things that is coming, the density bonus, Dennis, for achievable housing override local adequate public facilities ordinance? That's a concern of ours, too.
So the House Bill 538 was the 2024 bill on housing policy that did pass. One of the elements in the bill as introduced was to say that some of the projects that were described in the bill would be excluded from the effects of a local adequate public facilities laws. So these are laws that local governments have said, in the name of smart growth, you want to make sure you don't overburden your infrastructure in one area. If you're already overcrowded in the schools, or you don't have the wastewater pipes, sewer lines and so forth, then you may have to limit growth and not do more building permits in that area until you have the capacity for it. Mostly, that's been an applauded policy. At the moment, it's kind of butting heads with the idea we need to build housing anywhere we can. That stuff all came out of the bill. It wasn't in the bill that passed. There's a lot of different moving parts there. So I don't think that issue is completely behind us, but it came out of last year's bill and didn't pass.
Okay. Yeah, with increased housing and everything, you're going to need increased schools. Schools, we know, we're building an elementary school, I think Wakefield Elementary, I think, what was it, 85 million? We're going to build another school to replace the old John Archer, and I think that's going to be 100 million. You know, so that cost comes for a price, and we certainly don't want to raise taxes to build these things. You know, this blueprint certainly doesn't help things, you know, because they're coming back and saying, okay, we need more money, and more money, and more money. And, you know, the buck only goes so far, you know, and we certainly don't want to give more people pain by having to go back to say, okay, you're going to increase your taxes. And anyway, I think that's all I have, but thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? So, Michael, just a couple of quick questions. We all know how wonderful Mako is. What a great opportunity, as Councilman Guthrie said, for us to interact and build relationships with other elected officials from other jurisdictions, kind of get a feel for how they're handling different pieces of legislation or concerns or issues. How many, what is the attendance there? I often wondered that.
So this year, this year, we've been breaking records each year.
I remember you saying that in the meeting, that there's a higher attendance.
That's a great thing, right? You want the trend line to be upward. The last couple of years have been pretty remarkable, and over the last two years, the event has grown about 35%, which is bananas. We have, you know, I've been doing this job for a pretty long time. I've been with the association for a really long time, and we got pretty comfortable with the idea of you get 3% or 4% growth in the number of people who come and attend each year, and then a little bit of an extra spike during the election year where there's a little extra intrigue, and that was a nice thing to model on. We've been shattering the mold. The attendance is universal. One thing that's happened is because all the counties and their leaders and decision-makers are in the room, you end up getting state agencies who say, this is a great place for us to make connections as well. So I know your county sits down with officials from the Department of Transportation, and you have what ends up being an official step in their process of developing their six-year plan. They say the best place to get some informal input from all the jurisdictions, you go to the Mako conference. Every county's going to be there, and you can talk nuts and bolts about project lists and that sort of stuff. The Department of the Environment has increasingly been doing the same sort of thing. The governor's Smart Growth subcabinet had an event onsite and so forth. This year, we tipped over 3,000 official, both registrants and staff at booth and so forth. Actually, this year, we had to tell our exhibitors, we had to limit the number of staff for each booth. We're just having trouble getting parking for people to attend the facility. Still, more than 3,000 people officially on the books. That doesn't include folks who are an extra ticket at the crab feast or end up coming in for the one single event and that sort of stuff. So I think there's about 4,000 people that are in the orbit of the Mako Conference during that week in Ocean City. It's productive at a lot of levels. We all get a lot out of it.
Yeah, no, and you had mentioned at our general meeting that the numbers were up, but I couldn't remember if you had said, and I was just curious. And for me personally, I mean, I've made a lot of connections there, being able to talk to folks and try to get some input from them and some advice, and some wise counsel on some things, too. So I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys being here this evening. I know you've got a busy schedule. I don't want to hold you up any longer. It was a pleasure seeing you, Mr. County Executive, as always. You guys take care. Thank you. Thank you. We'll move on now to Agenda Number Seven, Approval of Minutes, Legislative Day 24-023, September 10, 2024. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, the corrections stand approved. Agenda item number eight, Introduction and Consideration of Resolutions. Resolution 015-24, Historic Landmark Tudor Hall, may have a motion.
Council President, I move to approve Resolution 15-24.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved in a second to approve Resolution 015-24. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being five votes in the affirmative, two absent, the Resolution 015-24 stands approved. Resolution 016-24, Historic Landmark Emmerton Schoolhouse, may have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve Resolution 16-24.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved in a second to approve Resolution 016-24. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being five votes in the affirmative, zero, or excuse me, two absent, Resolution 016-24 is hereby approved. Mr. Giordano, please read in Bill 24-031, Hotel Occupancy Tax.
Bill 24-031, Hotel Occupancy Tax, introduced by Council members Bennett and Boyle Sodles, enacted a repeal and reenact with Amendment Section 123-68, Distribution of Revenue of Article 7 Hotel Occupancy Tax of Chapter 123 Finance and Taxation of Hartford County Code as amended to delete the reference to Destination Marketing Organization to clarify the applicable tax collected shall be paid over to visit Hartford, and to require that distribution shall be paid between the 15th and 30th of each calendar month in January relating to occupancy, hotel occupancy tax and finance and taxation. Public hearing scheduled on Tuesday, October 15, 2024, at 6:45 PM in the council chambers.
Thank you. Also, please read in Amendments One and Two, or excuse me, Mr. Riley, you're going to read those in? read those in?
Mr. Teder.
Okay. Amendments One and Two to Bill twenty-four dash zero twenty-five.
Amendments One and Two to Bill twenty-four dash zero twenty-five, Zoning, Towing, Business and Storage, introduced by Councilmember Riley. Amendment number one on page one, in line fifteen, after stations insert in the CI district end. Amendment number two on page one, in lane sixteen, strike quotation marks. Comma, striking the comma.
Thank you. Introduction and Consideration of Amendments, Amendments One and Two to Bill twenty-four dash zero twenty-five, Zoning, Towing, Business and Storage, may have a motion.
Council President, I move to approve Amendments One and Two to Bill twenty-four dash zero twenty-five.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Guthrie, thank you. It's been moved in a second, Mr. Riley.
Yeah, so, just so everyone is aware on the dais, we did not want gas stations in G.I., and so we had to, it was only for the towing facility, and so we had to take that out. So that's what page, on page one, line fifteen does. It takes out gas stations. It keeps them only in C.I., am I correct there? Thank you. Just, it keeps them in C.I. and keeps towing in G.I. Again, all of this has went through the planning and zoning. They all agree with it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being five votes in the affirmative, two absent, Amendments One and Two to Bill twenty-four dash zero twenty-five are hereby approved. Agenda Number Eleven, Call for Final Reading of Bills. We have none. Twelve unfinished business, we have none. Thirteen new business. Letter of Support, Miracle League of Harford County. We have... Sam, do I have that letter in my folder? So we have had a request, thank you. We've had a request from the folks at the Miracle League and delegate, oh, gosh. Yeah, Mike Griffith, to send a letter of support for financing to where we can have a handicap facilities, bathroom facilities built on the site. And what we're looking for is a match, I believe it's two hundred and fifty. Mr. Walz, an audience, good to see you, sir. It's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar match between the county and the state. And we believe that the Miracle League field and the group itself does an outstanding job representing the families with disabilities and creates a great opportunity for the kids and the folks to be outside and participate in sports. It is, I guess, the field's been there for a few years now. We just cut the ribbon on the lights that were just put in this year, and this bathroom is a much-needed addition to the program. So I would ask all of us to support this, this letter, and at this time, may have a motion.
Council President, I move to approve the letter of support for the Miracle League of Harford County.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved in a second to approve a letter of support. Is there any discussion? Anyone else? Mr. Riley?
Yes, I'd just like to, Mr. Walz, you and all the folks up there, we appreciate what you do for our county. A lot of our special need children have a place to go and have activity. And I know you've been involved in it from the beginning, and I just appreciate it coming from a council member and also just from a resident of Harford County. So thank you and your staff.
Ditto. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being five votes in the affirmative, two absent, the letter of support for the Miracle League of Harford County is hereby approved. Agenda Number Eighteen, Comments and Input from Attending Citizens. Ms. Dixon, we haven't anyone signed up?
Yes, Mr. President, we have five this evening.
Thank you. With five speakers this evening, I would remind each of you that you have three minutes. Call your first speaker.
Monica McHale, followed by Lee Maddox.
Good evening, ma'am. Name an address, please.
Good evening. Monica McHale, two one zero three, Wyndham Court, Bel Air, Maryland, two one zero one Okay. Thank you, County Council. Appreciate being here. I haven't seen you guys in a little bit. I have been informed that there is a DAC meeting tomorrow at nine A.M., which I'm not able to attend, so I wanted to attend tonight. I'd like to propose getting an extension for this DAC meeting so that we can bring experts, as per Mr. Snay's recommendation, and to actually postpone the timing of the meeting till seven thirty P.M., when people from the community can attend. There was a large turnout on July seventeenth at the Abingdon Firehouse, and I had went to that one with the anticipation of hearing that the meeting might be soon thereafter. So I was very active in trying to track it. I had requested from the former Assistant, Ms. Castillo, to notify me, but there's been a change in the staff. And Ms. DeSantis has been very helpful, but I didn't see the notice until, I think it was September eleventh. And I went to take a picture of it on last Thursday, the twelfth, and signs stated that they were posted on September fourth. So I was a little discouraged at the short notice of actually knowing when the meeting would be. And I'd like to recommend that we try to get more of the community actually involved, as well as experts, so that we can deal with the technical aspects of the property of caddy farms. I was told by one person on Nextdoor app, Brenda Offenbecker, that she works at Costco in White Marsh, and that she's saying it's already a done deal, which was very discouraging. But I'd like to know the real status. As well as I've seen property, Dixie Construction moved dirt on the property on August twenty-fourth, Saturday at eleven approximately. I was across the road getting a blood lab drawn for my mom at LabCorp. And also on the thirty-first of August, with no notice of why they're moving dirt. I had asked kindly for Mr. Sabatino to go and see, inquire, and was told they're moving dirt to move to the project on ninety-five South by the express lanes, not being informed that moving dirt is moving the project forward. So I'd like a little more transparency. I'd like to request that the homeowners associations, which Bright Oaks does not have one, the communities be informed that the DAC meeting is occurring, and that Bright Oaks, Hunter's Run, Patterson Mill, Calvert's Walk, and Barrington communities, surrounding communities in that area, be permitted to attend with adequate notice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am. Name an address, please.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Lee Maddox, and I reside at seventeen hundred Church Point Court in Perryman. My topic tonight is trust. Trust in our local laws, in this council, and in the community. The council took a stand by enacting legislation limiting warehouses to two hundred and fifty thousand square feet in light industrial zones, under, by understanding the harms oversized industrial developments can cause. Now developers of the Mitchell Farm are trying to push through an illegal eight hundred thousand foot squared freight terminal by bundling it with a community-supported project, the thoroughbred horse training facility. This coercion is unacceptable. It reminds me of an old ship sailing through dangerous waters. You've already set the sail. You and your compass, your zoning laws, has kept the ship on track. But now we have a developer trying to throw your compass overboard, hoping to steer the ship in a dangerous territory for their own gain. If we let them, we risk wrecking the rocks, wrecking on the rocks, with a long-term damage that will ripple through the community. The Mitchell Company Farm was historically zoned for agricultural before being converted to light industrial in the nineteen nineties, with the promise of two essential roads, Woolley Road and Mitchell Lane. Yet here we are, nearly thirty years later, and neither required road has been completed. Today, corn and soybeans cover the land, while industrial development threatens to destroy nearly seventeen residential neighborhoods. We cannot let that broken promises justify reckless development. Rezoning the Mitchell Farm back to agricultural fills the doughnut, safeguards our future, and still supports a horse training facility. The development poses a real danger to the Perryman Well Field, which supplies thirty percent of Harford County's drinking water, with over ten million square feet of industrial development already burdening this resource. The migration of known PFAS contamination from APG may be happening as we speak. Our community's water supply is too important to gamble with outdated studies and illegal development. And now the developer is trying to intimidate us further, threatening to put something even worse on the property if we don't accept their illegal proposal, like a high-density battery plant or a Boeing manufacturing facility. We know light industrial zoning is not appropriate for these kinds of heavy manufacturing operations. It's time to call their bluff and stop letting them bully this community into accepting what is unlawful and harmful. As is often said in politics, nothing happens by accident. The developer's tactics aren't accidental. They're coercive and threaten to undo the protections we have fought for. The people of Harford County are counting on you to keep the trust we have placed in you. Reject these tactics, uphold the zoning laws you passed, and stand with us in defending the integrity and public health of Harford County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Bill Whalen, followed by David Bauer.
Good evening, sir. Name an address, please.
Sure. Bill Whalen, four fifteen Cedar Springs Road, Bel Air, Maryland, two one oh one five. Harford County resident, thirty-eight years, and same home. I didn't know Monica would be here, and I'm going to be talking on the same subject. My house is one half mile from the proposed Costco, which will be discussed at the DAC meeting tomorrow, right here in these chambers at nine. The plans introduced in July should development will include one hundred and sixty-two thousand square foot warehouse, eight hundred and twenty-one parking spaces, twenty-four gas pump stations. So twenty-two acres of the thirty-three acres at Plum Tree and Emmerton Roads. The remaining eleven acres are subdivided in seven lots. They could develop for almost anything, restaurants, car wash, or any other type of business use. An announcement of this meeting was in the business section of Baltimore Sun this morning. The Sun article states DAC members will make recommendations to the developer for the project. In addition, all concerns from citizens at the community input meeting in July will address by agencies, such as Maryland State Highway. The developer will be obligated to resolve any issues raised by committee members and the Maryland State Highway. Once all issues are resolved and approved by planning and zoning, they will grant plan approval and/or site approval. The meeting is open to the public, and citizen comments or questions are allowed. Few general comments because of time limits. Residents at the community meeting in July cited traffic congestion, pedestrian safety, environmental impact, and an overall reduction in the quality of life. Major, majority for a Costco did not reside in the close vicinity of the site. Costco may be desired in Bel Air. I'm not totally against it, but there are better locations than this site. Traffic impact study was submitted to the county on July twenty-fourth. Comments and questions by letter that I made to the county on September fourth remain unanswered. In my opinion, no traffic study or off-site road improvements will solve a future traffic volume estimated to be over ten thousand trips per day on weekdays and seventeen thousand on Saturdays. Anyone who travels twenty-four, nine twenty-four, or Tollgate Road from U.S. one to I ninety-five or back will be severely impacted, far, far more than present. The county has shown no interest in purchase of land for Parkland and citizen use like elsewhere. The development within the, the county has failed to miserly meet the purpose of two sixty-seven dash three. In twenty thirteen, the council failed to approve Bill thirteen sixteen to resist sides of box-type stores to seventy-five thousand square feet. Before that, they approved rezoning from residential use to business use for the benefit of developers, not cities, citizens. Will the legitimate citizens currently address the Mar?
Whalen, please ring your comments.
Or will they be ignored and unfinished? Possible podium?
Possible. Thank you. I knew you would remember that.
I don't know what happened to it. Used to be one there. I don't know what happened to it.
Good evening, sir. Name an address, please.
Good evening. I'm David Bauer, twenty-nine fifty-two Kirkwall Court, Abingdon. This evening, I have a comment on the county's response to the Joppa Town High School shooting. As a quick background, I do not claim any expertise in this area. I have been interested in security, security failures, and the responses to security measures and failures for more than twenty-five years. Responses to tragedies, of course, span a wide range. On one end is thoughts and prayers, which originally meant sympathy and empathy, but which has come to mean taking no action. On the other end, strong emotions often drive a need to act now, to do something. People often want to see a response, even if that response causes problems instead of fixing them. Obviously, we want something different from these options. We want rational examination of the problem. We want to study the research and work that has already been done. And we want measures that address a wide range of situations, and not just the one scenario that happened at Joppa Town High School. I expect you are aware that there's a petition to demand metal detectors at every entrance of all the schools and to mandate clear backpacks. These are measures that are very clearly aimed at the event that happened. That does not mean that they are the correct measures to prevent a future tragedy. Back in twenty eighteen, the county held a town hall to discuss school security following the shooting in Parkland, Florida. In that case, the shooter was external to the school, and the local discussions generally focused on external threats. A lot of the discussion then was having more school resource officers, arming teachers and staff, and eliminating the need for students to go outside, to go between buildings. My daughter attends Patterson Mill, which is over two hundred thousand square feet in area. How many school resource officers would it take to really cover that space? Remember, there was an SRO at Joppa Town High School. Please do not let strong emotions drive the county's response to this tragedy. Please take patience and look at the research. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
The last speaker this evening is Edward Panowitz.
Good evening, sir. Name an address.
Yes, Edward Panowitz. I live at nine Lake Drive in Bel Air, two one oh one four. I also want to talk about this Costco project. My community is about a third of a mile from the location. It's within walking distance. There are two roads into our community. Both of them, the only access in and out is nine twenty-four. Even now, sometimes it takes as long as six, seven, eight minutes to get in and out of our community on nine twenty-four. A situation will only get worse, you know, with another anywhere from seven, eight, ten thousand car trips. Yes, they're all not going to come that way, but a lot of them will come that way. And there's other developments happening right in that area as well, the Chick-fil-A and whatever else goes onto that property adjacent to the Costco. There's other issues. I won't dwell on those. Bill and Monica talked about those already. I say the big concern for the community, and it's the same gentleman as it was ten years ago. We went through this ten years ago with the Walmart, and Walmart walked away from the site. Our understanding is it was because of the traffic situation. They could not resolve the traffic situation. It's no better today. It's worse, if anything, you know, with the amount of vehicles that are there. As Bill mentioned, this is not a Costco issue. Everybody at that meeting, that SIM meeting in July, pretty much would have no problem with a Costco being in Harford County, just not at that location. It's, in our opinion, it is a quality of life issue for Bel Air South. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
Thank you. With no more speakers, we'll do business from council members. Mr. Jan Giordano?
I'm going first.
Yes, sir.
All right. So, good evening, everybody. So, good evening, everybody. On Friday, September 16th, to the grand opening of the hair cutter in Rock Spring Road. On Monday, the 60th anniversary of John Carroll School. On Saturday, was able to do my friend Joe Ailer, 10-year construction of Tar Heel. Even though they've been around for a lot longer than that, they, they became more of a general contractor, and they incorporated, did some things different, so that, that's been 10 years. And then, this past Sunday, myself, Council President Vincenti, and Councilman Riley did Harfords, Harford Harvest up in Churchville, and we had a great meal. It was probably about 55, 60 people. We ate outside from all locally sourced products, so it was, that was a great event. And then, I'd like to say congratulations to the Latino community in general, especially in Harford County. This is Latino Heritage Month, and muchos felicidades a la familia Latina de Harford County, un mes de su aniversario. And, and finally, I want to thank everybody for all the phone calls, emails, the council for the basket, for the passing of my father. Have to say, he was 89, he was going to be 90 in October, and we were going to have a birthday party for him at the house because he really didn't want to stay in a restaurant, but unfortunately, he, he passed away. Saturday was, was a week ago, and he had fallen on Thursday, and that Sunday, I had taken him to the casino and breakfast. I had gotten up early, and I said, "Dad, I'm coming over to make you breakfast unless you want to go out." And he said, "Well, let's, let's go out." That was one of his favorite things to do, was, was go to the casino. My mother had passed away 15 years ago, and she said to me, "Take care of your father when he wants to go to the casino, take him." The first year my mother died, we went every other weekend for a year. Free rooms at the Borgata, I don't know if they were free in the long run, but we, we drive up, we drive up early Sunday morning, he'd call at 7 o'clock in the morning, "Aunt, where are you? We got to go." He wanted to go, he wanted to have breakfast at Omar's Diner, and he wanted to be at the casino by 11 o'clock, and if we got there by 10:30, 11 o'clock, we were able to check in. He used to like to go to the hot tub, and he would talk your ear off, but he wasn't an outgoing person, but, you know, and I have to say, 15 years of, of, I don't have my, my buddy to watch the Yankees anymore, or the Giants, since we're from North Jersey and moved here when I was 14, but it's been a tough week. It's probably going to be a lot tougher than I thought. I know he's at peace, he's with my mother, that's what he wanted to do, and he had broken a couple of ribs, couple of vertebrae, really didn't know where he was, and just the pain was excruciating, so I'm glad he's at peace, but it's hard. It's hard because I don't have my buddy around anymore, so, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Trudan, and Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. Again, I want to congratulate Joe Tar Heel Construction on his 10th year anniversary. I also appreciated that dinner we got at Home Lamb's Farms. Thank you for hosting that. I had the privilege of going to the 4H camp, Deer Creek Overlook. They came here a couple of weeks ago and, and asked if we would take a tour to my district. I went up there, and if you ever get a chance, you might want to go up there to the 4H camp. Harford Association of Realtors want to congratulate all those officers that were installed. And last but not least, again, I just want to mention the Miracle League. Thanks for inviting the council out, that we had the opportunity to meet you folks, and also all the clientele that were there. We appreciate, again, what you do. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Mr. Bennett.
Hello. Good evening. First, just some general thoughts that I have after experiencing tonight's meetings. I just, a general concern I have is democracy on paper and democracy in act, you know, democracy on paper does not guarantee democracy in action. And I just think it's so important that with all of the policies and procedures we have in place to collect community input and community say, that we make sure that they're safeguarded to be community-friendly and actually available for community to be a part of and empowered to have their voice heard. There's just several things that, throughout the night, that left me feeling concerned that that's not happening, and I want to make sure that it always is, and that no one ever sees and experience and feels like that was just there to say it was there, I was not heard. So that was just a general thought I just wanted to put into the air as I listened to public comment tonight, and we went through our agenda. This evening, I got to meet with the county executive for about an hour, myself and Tony sat down with County Executive Casely. I thank him for his time, which, you know, we don't always agree on things, but he always takes my meetings, which I really do appreciate, and we talked about just a lot of different things that we're working on within my district. And I also just wanted to speak to my district in saying that, you know, a big saying of mine in practice is nothing about us without us, and that's something that I hold firm in, in everything I do, whether it comes to the people on Pumpkin Patch Lane that I'm advocating for, you know, the people of Bell Camp, the people of Abingdon, people of Perryman, Havity Grace. It can't be done about us without us, so I just wanted to make sure that's very clear. This past week, I got to attend the NAACP yearly meet and greet along with Council President Vincenti, who drove past me as I was walking there, because it was right by my house, and that was a great event, something we always look forward to, and it's just a lot of fun, people in their 90s costumes. We obviously are having a lot of community meetings in regards to the horse train facility and working with the community to find that path forward and work together on that. There's two community input meetings in relation to District F I just wanted to highlight. On Wednesday, September 5th, there's going to be a, Wednesday, September 25th, excuse me, there's going to be a community input meeting for the proposed Bell Camp Car Wash at Abingdon Fire Company at 6:30 PM, and then on Thursday, September 26th, there will be a public meeting with DPW to discuss Hooker Mills Bridge replacement, and that will also be at Abingdon Fire Company at 6:00 PM. So those are just important things to be aware of, to have on your radar, and if those things impact you, to, to be there and to, to be a voice. So with that, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Guthrie.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, we had that awful event at Joppa Town High School, which has never happened in the history of Harford County, and I hope it never happens again. Martin Grant, who's the young man who lost his life in that event, they're having a viewing at McComas in Abingdon from 2:00 to 4:00 and 7:00 to 9:00 on this Thursday, 19th. Anyone who'd like to stop by, I'm sure the family would be glad to see him. I've been inundated, can imagine, with all of, because I've lived in the area for 58 years and know just about everybody, the parents, a lot of them talking to me about it, and what we can do and what we can't do. It's, there's lots of ideas being thrown out there, and we're certainly going to try to entertain something, to do something about this situation, and we don't know what it is now yet, but we'll get through it. I'd like to thank everybody, but my, you know, my law who lives with us, been living with us for over 10 years, she had, in the middle of this, and it's just been a, probably just like Tony says, it's been an absolutely terrible week all the way around. Sunday, a week ago, I momentarily got rushed to the hospital, and was in the hospital from Sunday to Friday. We brought her home Friday, and they're doing hospice from the house, so everybody knows what that means. She's 98 years old, we were hoping to get her to 100. We're, we're going to keep priding her, and she's got a lot of fight in her, so I hope, I hope she, she makes it. We appreciate everybody's thoughts, and my wife, I couldn't get her home from the hospital. She, she went to the hospital with mom on Sunday, and she stayed at the hospital 24 hours, six straight days, and never came home. She wouldn't leave her mom. She didn't have a shower or change of clothes. I offered to bring her change of clothes. "No, I'm okay." I said, "Well, you're going to take a shower, you stink." No. She didn't laugh at that either. So, did she sleep when she came home, though? And I took, I took care of mom, took her off her hands while she got herself some rest. St. Francis Church in Abingdon on 450 Abingdon Road, I was having a blood drive on this Thursday, 9:20, from 11:00 to noon. I'll certainly be up there to give my, my blood. The, the Joppa Town's having a flotilla on, for the gunpowder, you know, the cleanup of the gunpowder river, we, we're trying to bring a lot of attention to the, to the fact. So this Saturday, not the Saturday, but Saturday, the 28th, we're, we're gathering all the boats and kayaks together to leave from Mariner Point Park to, to other points along the river at 9:30 AM. The goal one is to meet at the Amtrak Bridge. A boat passes by 10:30, and goal two is to meet at the point dock by the big buoy that we have mounted there that, if nobody has one, I'm talking about, umpteen years ago, there was a big buoy that used to float out in the middle of the gunpowder, showing you the entrance to the gunpowder, and that buoy broke loose and crossed the entire Atlantic and got, and got to Europe. And when it got to Europe, they found out where it came from, and they sent it back, and then, I think it was County Executive Charlie Anderson at the time, that's how far back it goes, he took it and he mounted it, you know, he brought it up out of the water and it's mounted at, at the Mariner Point Park, so when you come in, you see it right there at the entrance now. Now, I got to get on the Parks and Rec, they're, they're gone now, but they're supposed to be painting it. It needs some paint, it needs some upkeep. I said, "Get us the paint, we'll paint it." The kayaks, in other words, if you want to come and run a kayak, they have them there for rent, and I think the, it's about 30 bucks for the day, and for the first 20 who come, they're going to have Mad About Mud t-shirts, or as they used to call it, Mad About Mud has been running a lot of this stuff to try to bring attention to the gunpowder. I noticed, I read an article about how good the, the grasses are growing all through our state, the article just came out, that all through the state, all through the, through the Chesapeake Bay, that 90% of the grasses out there are coming back, all except the gunpowder. And all the grass in the gunpowder is dead because of that, that overflow, overflow from the development, which I'm great, there's a great lawsuit being filed in for $25,000 a, a event, a charge, so I'm hoping that goes through. With that, that's all I have tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number 16, Business from the President, and as you can hear from my colleagues, we've had a very busy week in the office and out of the office. We attended the Ralph Woody Business Association Luncheon, the NAACP Meet and Greet, the Homecoming Project Gala, which celebrated 18 years of recovery here in Harford County for the Women's Home, and they honored their founder, Robin Keener, who passed away. At the Armory, the Bel Air Armory, we had Arts Across America, it's the opening of the plein air art festival. I met Saturday with the Harford County Caucus of African-American Leaders, celebrated Tar Heels 10 years here in the county, and then, obviously, we talked about the Harvest Dinner at Homeland's Farm, and as Tony said, what was unique is this farm was highlighting our young, this dinner was highlighting our young farmers, and the farm itself was owned by the Harland family at one time, and its descendants have it now. Kate Dallin and Louise Umbarger were there hosting the dinner along with Emmy, I think it is, I got to put my glasses on, Emmy Dallin Beavers, the Huber family was there, the Magnus family was there, the Hopkins family, the Peverly Dunham family, and the Musser family. These were all items that were raised locally in Harford County, and I think they did an outstanding job. There was probably 50 of us at a table, so it was very nicely done. So with that, I just want to continue to say that I'm very proud of my colleagues. They continue to represent their citizens in all districts, all events to the best of their ability, and I couldn't be more proud of them, so thank you, and that'll adjourn this meeting.